Call the meeting to order for the record session for the Hammond City Council Public Hearing for July 25th, 2017, roll conference.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
Okay, we have no public hearings, we're going to go right into our regular session. Roll conference.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
Okay, Councilwoman Janice, please.
Yes, sir.
O'er heaven and father, once again, those of us who have been elected to run the business of the city of Hammond has gathered together. We pray, o'er heaven and father, that we are fair, that we listen, and that we do all that we can to improve the lives of all of the citizens of this great city. We thank you, oh lord, for all that you're doing in our lives. And we ask also that you bless this city, bless this state, and bless this country. These are all blessings we ask in the name of your precious son, Jesus. To God be the glory. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman, would you please lead us in the place?
I should invite all active military to render a proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the holy states, my nation and my home, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We've asked the chief to come out, and, well, before we do that, are there any council reports? Any particular council reports? We're going to ask the chief to come up. We're going to spend some time talking about some of the concerns about panhandling within the city, and the chief wants to address the council, and at the same time, address the community regarding this issue. So, chief, go.
Thank you. James Stewart, City of Hammond, Chief of Police. Fortunately for the City of Hammond, while we have panhandlers in the city, we don't have a, it's not a, it's not a huge problem. We have them, they're around, they tend to congregate, mostly around the I-12, and most recently, we've been, we've been seeing them at the racetrack and the Shell Station, a couple of other places, on 190, as well as out by the turnaround, the traffic circle on Southwest Railroad. After consultation with the prosecutor here in the city, the elements that we have to meet as police officers, beyond the actual solicitation for money is not a violation. So if they're standing on the side of the highway on a public, on a public access, they can, they can solicit for money. The violation becomes apparent when they otherwise impede traffic, or threaten drivers, or do something that causes something other than just the panhandling. So they have to be in violation of a sec. The first violation is, it sort of fits the vagrancy statute for the Louisiana Revised Statute, 107. However, other cities have tried to enforce just that panhandling violation, and it's been struck down by the Supreme Court in a First Amendment type of situation. So, as police officers, and as the chief of police, I don't encourage my officers to make arrests, or otherwise issue summonses for the simple act of panhandling. Okay? That's it. However, if they do a second offense, then we will impose either a summons, or take them, or actually arrest them. So, those are, those are the two big vari, that's the only thing they can really do that causes us to get involved. However, the bigger problem that I see, and that I'm seeing in other parts of the sanctimony area, as well as in Livingston, are that they're getting, they're going on private property. Suggestions are made, how can we combat that? One is, don't encourage the panhandlers by giving them money, or food, or anything. Just let, just, now, if they, if they don't get, if they don't get what they're looking for, they're going to walk, they're going to go away. It's as simple as that. However, people are benevolent here in Hammond, as well as other places, and they do give money. So on private property, what we're encouraging business owners to do, as well as the police and citizens, if they're, if they're approached by a solicitor looking for money on private property, whether it's racetracks, in one of the strip malls, Shell, you name it, gas station, we're asking them to call us so we can come and check the person out. If nothing else, we're not, we're not, we don't expect the driver to stand by and wait for the police to come there. But if they call, if they call the police, give us a description, and we see the guy on the property, we'll check with the management of the store, ask them if they want him arrested for trespassing. If they don't, because he's not really causing that much of a problem, and they're not impacting business, then we'll run their names for warrants, and then ask them to leave the property in a friendly manner, and ask them to do their panhandling, or their soliciting, away from the private property. The other thing that we're seeing sometimes is, our citizens feel like they're being threatened or otherwise coerced into giving money or food, mostly money, I don't, I don't really see food as the option here, but it's, again, if they feel threatened, or if they're, if they're badged or something like that, and they call us, they can be, they can be arrested for that as well. Because they're going beyond, again, it's, well, they're trespassing for one, they're soliciting for number two, and then if they're threatening, or casualing the citizen into money, then we can take them to jail for that as well. The highway incidents, the incidents on public thoroughfares, if they threaten a driver, or they, or they do something that impacts the driver's ability to move his vehicle, or to proceed in traffic, then that gives us the probable cause, at that point, to bring him to jail, or issue a summons for impeding traffic, or the normal flow of traffic. And a flow of traffic doesn't have to be vehicular, it could be pedestrian as well. So if they're on the sidewalk, and they're, and they're trying to hit up everybody for money, and they're on the sidewalk, they can be arrested, or summoned for that as well.
In those last three cases, chief, would the citizen be required to still be there?
The citizen wants to make the complaint, and she want, and they want, he or she would like to, because they feel like they were threatened, or a simple battery may have occurred, according to, they would have to stay on scene. But if they, if they're just approached, the guy threatens them, or is being boisterous about getting the money, and they want to leave, we tell them to leave, call it in anyway, and give us a description of the guy, and we'll go over there and check them out, to see if they're wanted, check with the management of the particular store. This is on private property now, okay? And then, if the management, or the clerks don't want to press the charges, or feel as though the guy's not being that much of a problem, all we'll do is ask them to leave. There's a balance there that we have to, we have to, we have to meet, and it's a fine line between an enforcement, an enforcement incident, and just us gently getting in the way of the guy, and asking him to move on.
Yeah, sure. I've talked to the chief and Lacy about this numerous times, I see it a lot, especially at the traffic circle. One thing that I had brought up, and kind of get the chief, I don't know that I've ever talked to you about it, I did talk to Lacy about it, I don't know that I even talked to the mayor about it, but one of the ideas that I had was, is we have these "Drive Like Your Kids, Live Here" signs, that they're kind of out the box a little bit, that really kind of took off. And to me, panhandling does not put a good light on our city. So as people getting off the interstate, and leaving the Walmart, I noticed there's a lot, there's a lot of folks that hang out at the, at the red light at the Walmart. It really paints us in a bad light, in my opinion. So, one of the things I thought of, that we could do to possibly, it's an idea to get y'all's input, to combat this, would be to do some sort of sign. Say if you got off the interstate at I-12, the sign would say, "We here at the City of Hammond do not encourage you to donate to panhandlers. If you are harassed in any way, shape, or form for this, please call, and maybe have the local number instead of a 911."
Right. It should come through the 5700 number. We wouldn't want to bother a 911 center for that.
That we could put in strategic places, so we can't stop them from panhandling, but at least they'd have to do it under a sign that says, "We don't encourage it here." So don't give them money. So it might be something that could...
That's, we're in front of it, because we, people are not shy about calling us. So our, our officers are at, you know, we use racetrack to fill up our vehicles anyway.
Right, right.
And we're also at Shell, so we're in these, we're in these parking, we're in these, these gas stations on a regular basis. So, while you have the prob, I see the problem, but trust me, it's not near as bad as it could be. I think we're in front of it a little bit. Your suggestion would work, that's up to you guys, if you want to put the sign down, that's a good thing. Asking drivers not to support the panhandlers as they come off the interstate. Keep in mind, a lot of the people that come off the interstate are tourists, they're just, they're just, they're flipping through, so, you know, they're benevolent, so they just see the guy, give him a couple 25, 50 cents, and then they just go about their business. They don't, they don't really, they're not from Hammond, generally.
Well, my thought would be, if we had the sign there, it would possibly, and we put them strategic places, it might possibly stop them from having to go set up shop right there, under a sign that says, "We don't encourage you," or "We encourage you not to give to these folks." So it might make them move elsewhere.
I'm in support of anything like that.
To Councilman Hood's point, it also would increase the awareness as well, and make the number to call accessible.
Yes.
And available. So...
Well, that number would be the 5700 number. And that puts it right in our dispatch center, we can send a car right over.
Putting a few signs around, like in certain places.
That's up to you guys, we'll do it.
Walmart and those places, they might be willing to do that, so.
If you want to put the signs up, with, I support you guys for doing that, I don't think that'd be a problem, you know, if that's what you want to do, that's fine. That's always a big help.
Not a legal issue, and I think possibly, coming off the interstate, seeing that, might be somewhat comforting.
Yeah. All you're doing as city leaders is asking people to help us, to help us to keep the side of the highway safe, not encourage panhandling, so that drivers can just move about their business. And also, it also helps businesses not have to worry about calling the police every time a panhandler's on the property, whether it's the strip mall, or the gas stations, and it keeps, keeps that harassment away from the private, the business owners, too, as well.
Any other questions?
Thanks, that's a good idea.
Lacy?
I would just say, I think that language is a little different than what we had talked about earlier, because Andre and I had talked some about the earlier language, we just wanted to be careful, of course, and run it by Andre for that final language.
Well, you guys can come up with some type of language, that you think is appropriate, and then run it by the council, and if you need us to approve that, I think we can probably get that done. It's a good suggestion.
Of course.
Any other questions from the audience regarding panhandling? No questions? Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you all very much, yeah, nice night.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, we also have a privilege to have two elected officials with us tonight, President
Concern that usually when we hear education in our community, we start to immediately think about lawsuits. But I also think it's fair to say that I work with a board that's concerned with being more proactive and not just reactive as we work towards equity in the Hammond area and all of Tanshahoh Parish. And we want to be creative and innovative as we work for solutions to improve equity as well as strive for excellence and build a culture of excellence in our education system in this parish. You all have put forth an idea dealing with upgrading an area that's near and dear to my heart around the Greenville Park area. My husband grew up in that area, still visit that, my grandmother's, my mother-in-law's home. In fact, if you want to see where my husband grew up, go to the new Home Depot, it's Home Depot, and look west and that little gray house that you could hit a rock, you throw and hit it with a rock from Home Depot. That's where he grew up. So that's the school that he attended, and I'm so excited about the ideas that you all have that we want to join in and be a part of for upgrading not only that area but possibly expanding the STEM program at Hammond Junior High and looking for a way to make it a true magnet school and building a positive culture and climate, increasing the positive culture and climate around that school. So again, I want to thank you for including us as part of that and let you know that we are eager to work with you to do anything we can to give the kids of this parish and this area the best education we can, and we think this initiative is going to help move us in that direction.
Well, thank you very much. Any comments from the council? Councilwoman Beers, you have any comments you want to add on to that?
Well, we had been meeting with different officials and people of the community to look into, like she said, turning Greenville Park into a full magnet school with the STEM program, making sure that our kids are prepared for the jobs that are available, that we seem to not be having anyone trained for these particular jobs, and a lot of the jobs are being outsourced because of the fact that we're not trained. So we're looking into the possibility of rejuvenating the Greenville Park area, and that would include the Greenville Park Leadership Academy as in turning it into a full STEM school where we'll make sure that science, technology, engineering, and math is the main courses that we're teaching there, but also to make sure that the kids are prepared so that when we get them to Hammond High that they are already prepared and ready to go out into the workforce, prepare for the new jobs that are available, and make sure that we produce some of those jobs in this area. So we're looking into all kinds of things with the renovation of the park along with the renovation of the Greenville Park area. We're looking into the schools, we're looking into libraries, and making sure that we have access to resources that would make those areas desirable when it comes to being a residential
Home ownership.
Home ownership and for residential promotion in those areas.
Well, once again, we just want to thank you and Mike Whitlow for coming out, and also this is a project that we think has some possibility, and you know, without a school being an anchor for that community, it will make a big difference. So I know there's a lot of work to be done, and this is just the initial conversations. I know you wanted to come and address the council, so we want to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we're not doing this in a silo, but we're doing this as a community initiative. So we're going to continue to focus on it, and we'll share with the council and the mayor as we move forward with the progress. So we appreciate you very much, and if you guys can hang around, we'd love for you to. It shouldn't be much longer than we can maybe talk.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you too. Okay. Mayor report?
I'm really excited about Home Depot. They'll be opening their doors tomorrow. Their ribbon cutting will be unique. It'll be instead of the ribbon, they'll have a board, a very huge board that they'll be cutting with a chainsaw. They're providing jobs for 150 people. It's a big, big deal for the city of Hammond. We're excited to have it in the community. We've been wanting for a while. They've been trying to get here for a long time, and that's going to be a great day for the city and for Home Depot as well. Connected Home Depot with the Fuller Center in Tamara De Nell, and they have graciously given Tamara's organization a nonchalant $5,000, and they will be partnering with them in the future to build their homes like they've done in your area for families that couldn't otherwise afford, that might be single parents with children, where they really don't need to pay a note, but if they have extra cash, they can pay into the Fuller Center to try to pay back some of the funds that it costs to build the houses. So Home Depot is going to be a key player over the Fuller Center in the future. From what they're saying, they have nine stores in the area, and their employees come out in force and help build and do projects as well. So that's going to be really exciting, partnering up with Home Depot. Also, we have a back-to-school bash on Thursday, 9 to 2. Friday, I'm sorry, 9 to 2 at West Park, Minnesota School. That's going to be a big event for the kids, giving them back supplies for going back to school, so we're excited about that. And once again, that is on Friday from 9 to 2.
This Friday?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'd also like to mention that we've always had good participation from Home Depot. They were coming out of Covington at the time, whenever we have our Clean City Days, they always send a crew.
That's right. They have been good partners, and the new manager is excited about being in Hammond, and she's looking forward to working closely with us. And the corporate supervisor is down, and was very excited about getting involved with the community and the Fuller Center as well, and also keeping Hammond beautiful as they have been doing. So we're excited about coming into our area.
Okay. Good. Anything else? Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, we'll also take this time to recognize any of our new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? Any new businesses? Okay. All right, we're going to minutes for July 11, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, let's go into new business. No old business, none, so new business, read the first resolution number one, please.
Number one, a resolution to approve Mojitos Bistro located at 207 East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana 70401, to sell high-low alcohol. The owner is Lil Havana LLC, Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, I'm here to ask for alcohol approval on a new restaurant that's come to town located downtown on East Thomas Street where the old Rotolos used to be.
Santiago's.
Or Santiago's, yes. And they have met all the requirements that we've asked of them to do, and I am asking for approval tonight. They're called Mojitos Bistro, so I think it might be a combination, you can ask him when he comes up, of the kind of cuisine that they have. It may be a Cuban-Mexican type mixture, I'm not quite sure, but we do have a representative here tonight, and I'm going to ask him to come up now, and y'all can ask him any questions that you might have.
Sure.
Mr. Trav?
Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name and your address for the record, please.
Jose Valencia, 207 East Thomas.
Okay. You want to tell us a little bit about the restaurant?
So it's going to be fresh Latin food. So we're going to do a juice bar in daytime with cafe. We're going to use a lot of these fruits for desserts. It's going to be Caribbean themed, so I'm excited that downtown needs a lot of pressed sandwiches and fresh salads.
Music?
Yeah.
And cacti.
Cacti, with the same fruit, that's what I want to do. So at night, I want to sell Mojitos or martinis with mango, with strawberry, but I also want to use those ingredients for salads, you know, and for juicing.
Now, you're aware of that, you know, I think the standard comment that we make is that, you know, obviously you're aware of the underage drinking laws in the city of Hammond and that our law enforcement team will be out enforcing those laws to just make sure that you understand.
Yeah.
That we don't sell underage drinkers. Okay. All right. Any other questions from the public? Any questions from the council?
When are you open?
I'm hoping to open by hot August night, August 25th.
Well, that's what we'll be.
Hopefully, we have ready by then.
Motion to approve.
Oh, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good luck to you, okay?
Thank you.
Number two, a resolution to authorize the Downtown Development District and its approved merchants to serve alcohol during the event Hot August Night held on Friday, August 25, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Event is held within the boundaries of East and West Shaw Street, North and South Cherry Street, East and West Coleman Street, and North and South Pine Street. Ms. Chelsea Tallo.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hello, Chelsea.
These are the same resolutions we apply for every year, the same boundaries, nothing has changed.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Questions from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number three, a resolution to grant a waiver of the city of Hammond's open container law to the Downtown Development District and its approved merchants during the event Hot August Night held on Friday, August 25, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Event is held within the boundaries of East and West Shaw Street, North and South Cherry Street, East and West Coleman Street, and North and South Pine Street. Ms. Chelsea Tallo.
Same as last year, but I encourage everybody to come out this year, we've got some new stuff, so.
Any questions from the public? Questions from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Did you almost call Councilwoman Blunt?
Very close.
I thought you almost called her Councilwoman Johnny Blunt.
Number four, a resolution to approve budget change form number 18-01, transferring $325,000 from concrete street repairs FY 2018, project number 42011809, to street improvements FY 2017, project number 42011713, Chuck Spangler.
This is what it looks like, you have it hyperlinked. What we're doing is we let out our street project and our drainage projects relatively late in the fiscal year we just finished, which was '17. We're now in fiscal '18, those new monies have been adopted. Byron Talbot is a contractor on our street project right now, they're doing a really good job, you've seen what they've done all over town. We have three areas for which $325,000 is appropriated, I would like to transfer that into the current contract. We have, the next item is a change order approving some of that work, which is Duo Drive, Clark Park Parking, and Cypress Street paving. And there's some other paving, as you know, that's taken place that was unanticipated, like Coleman Street where the railroad took out the grade and we put a new, they put a new crossing in, so I met with Robert Morgan, and we had Byron Talbot repave those approach slabs. And then there was a cave-in over on East Coleman from a sewer line, and when they, when the sewer department got through with that repair, we had Byron Talbot go over and fix that repair. So there's some other things involved. Primarily, we're just trying to transfer in that to not take new bids. We have good contract, we have very excellent prices, very low prices, so that's the reason why we're recommending that we transfer this fund appropriation into the fiscal '17 project budget. And the next item will address the change order associated with that, if you so approve the budget change.
Do you have a question, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
So we're taking money that's already been appropriated for the same project in 2018 and moving it into 2017.
We're going to add this new work into a current ongoing contract that's still underway. That's correct.
And the work has already been approved in the budget?
Well, the budget's been approved, yes.
Right.
But the work has not been approved.
Right.
But the budget's been approved, yes, that's correct.
For this particular work, and we're just moving it in while they're still here.
That's correct.
Into the 2017.
We're going to add that as change order work to their current contract, same type of work, concrete and asphalt work.
We get it. Any questions from the public on that? Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number five, a resolution to approve change order number one, adding not to exceed $250,000 to street improvements FY 2017 contract, Byron E. Talbot contractor for additional street work per FY 2018, five-year capital improvement ordinance plus Coleman Street crossing at CNRR plus East Coleman Street repairs associated with sewer line collapse. Chuck Spangler.
So this is a companion action relative to what you just did. We do not have the actual number yet because they haven't done the work yet naturally, but we wanted to get the approval of doing this work so we can, because they're ready to leave town. If we don't hurry up and give them this change order work, they're going to leave, and we're going to have to rebid it. So you're looking at 90 days out, so that's what the nature of this project, of this particular item is, is approving the contract work. And you notice it's 250 where we just changed 325. I don't anticipate the work we're having in, because we have great prices, to be more than $250,000. If it is, obviously I'll return to the council for any approvals, but that's what the nature of that change order is. And Webb's about to address the same type of thing for drainage. So I would recommend approval of a change order not exceeding $250,000, and it will be documented at the time, obviously.
Okay. Any questions from the public?
Question.
Questions from the council?
So Chuck, we would take the 75 left over and move that into something else if it's in number 250?
Either that or add more streets. Whatever happens, when the time comes, we'll address it. We have a priority list, we'll probably do what we usually do, use that priority list, come to you and recommend that we press forward on other things, and we have emergencies, you know, like the Coleman Street stuff. So I don't really have an answer of what would happen, but I'm sure we'd be able to spend it somewhere on streets.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number six, a resolution to approve budget change form number 18-02, transferring $163,000 from drainage improvement FY 2018, project number 42011806, to drainage improvements FY 2017, project number 42011707, Webb Anderson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is exactly what Chuck just explained, just doing it for the drainage contractor. They're on East Mary now, they're hopefully getting close to finishing that up, and they've got a couple more areas to go to, but there's a few areas that we want to go ahead and add in, we've got good prices.
Okay. Any questions?
Recommend approval.
Questions from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number seven, a resolution to change, to approve change order number one, adding not to exceed $145,000 to drainage improvement FY 2017 contract, strain co-contractor for additional drainage work per FY 2018, five-year capital improvements ordinance plus Brandy Lane and Airport East Ramp. Webb Anderson.
That's correct. There's a few areas in the 2018, we're moving them into the contract, and then Brandy Lane is a spot that the mayor, Robert Morgan, have showed us, they've got some failures next to somebody's house we want to go ahead and hurry and fix, and then Airport East Ramp is where the new hangars would be going, doing some drainage work around there. We recommend approval of that.
Any questions from the public? Questions from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
We have an added resolution that we will need to vote to add on.
Yeah, let me, let's look at that.
Okay, number, it would be number 10.
Okay, so would you want to, so you want to read the?
I mean, I'm sorry, number eight, number eight.
So we'll have to, we'll have to vote to first to, could you tell us what it is about, and then once you do that, we can decide to vote to accept it, and then we can run on the amendment.
Yes. A resolution approving change order number one to state capital outlet project 50 MB9 15-02 Gateway to Hammond, Phase One, planning and construction in the amount of $18,700 to effect a paint color change and extend the project's contract period by 30 days pending approval by the capital outlet section. And this is coming from the Grant Department, Mr. Charles.
Charles, you want to explain that to everybody before we decide what we're going to do? We know this is really, really.
I have some visual aids, if anyone would like to see visual aids.
To amend.
So if anyone's been through, we're talking about the roundabouts at the intersection of I-12 and Southwest Railroad. If anybody's been through that area lately, you've noticed that there's some landscaping work going on and some painting that's gone on, the overpass itself, some green, some gray. Originally, there was a concept of putting red up there to sort of be evocative of the brick in downtown Hammond, and I think when the red started going up, people started going, that's really bright. So we've.
Did they stop when they saw it?
We did. We asked them to halt, we kind of met with the committee, and most of what's up there now is primer, it's a rusty color primer. What we're looking at doing is changing that color to a yellow, kind of a mustard yellow. We have a lighter color, a darker color, it would be somewhere in between that or one of those two colors. The $18,700 is the quote that we've got from the contractor on the project. It basically will take about 10 days to perform that work, and the change order also adds 30 days in total, that includes the 10, so an additional 20 days, really to account for the amount of rain we've had. We've had about 16 rain days so far, and it's Louisiana, and we're probably going to have more.
So you want us to move it up because?
Yes. We were looking at the deadlines we have to get this before our capital outlet section, and the concern is if we wait until that first meeting in August, that doesn't give them a very long window to make the approval, which is why we were asking for the addition today.
Does anybody in the council want to?
I'd be glad to make that move.
Motion to amend the agenda to add?
Yes, sir.
To add a resolution number eight?
Second.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Pleasure to counsel. We'll vote on the amendment.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thanks for your work, Charles.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay, no found, no found adoption of ordinances, we're going to go right into introduction of ordinances.
Number one, introduction of an ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign all documents in connection with acceptance of right-of-way dedication of Tiffany Lynn Court, a 10-foot servitude dedication, and renaming of right-of-way to Falcon Drive request by Gamma Holdings LLC located in Chase Plaza subdivision in accordance with survey by WMJ Bowden Jr., Row 2017 06 00004, recommended approval by planning commission Tracy Shalacy.
Good afternoon. This is a street that was never formally dedicated to the city. I call it the Piggly Wiggly Road, and they're also asking for the name to be changed from Tiffany Lynn Court to Falcon Drive.
Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for August 8, 2017. Number two, introduction of an ordinance to amend UDC ordinance number 14-5364, article 11.5, communication towers satellite to revise and add standards for wireless facilities in public right-of-ways, TA-20170500006, recommended approval by zoning commission CC Gagne.
Good evening. How are you all?
All right.
I had to put my hand out, you take yours out.
Yeah, well, unless I have to read something. This is an addition to the existing singular towers or towers for wireless communication. These towers are going to be placed in the right-of-way. They're very small in statue, they're usually put on a 40 to 50-foot wood pole, and they go in the right-of-way, and they're, right now, we have a request for nine locations in the city by AT&amp;T, and, but we had to rewrite the ordinance in order to be able to even permit those.
Are those locations going to be inside the ordinance?
No, they're not in the ordinance. This ordinance covers any of these providers that will come.
Can we get those locations, if that's possible?
Do what, sir?
Can we, can we get those locations?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We actually put a review committee in this ordinance that consists of two people appointed by the mayor, myself, Tracy, and the director.
Director.
You're right. Which we will review them all, but if you all, I mean, we can definitely.
I'm just curious, want to know where the locations are, you know, what we've, initial nine, what we've picked, our selected, be nice to know.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we wouldn't know.
Well, we can definitely get you a map of them, that's for sure.
These potentially will be in neighborhoods, is that correct?
Yes, some of them will be in neighborhoods, but these are actually in commercial areas, up by Hood Motors and out by Walmart and.
Where were the other?
Yeah.
Okay. So just for the record, so we should kind of know, just in case, we get asked that question.
Yes.
Any other questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for August 8, 2017. Number three, introduction of an ordinance for expanded conditional use request by Johnny Jackson to allow placement of manufactured home meeting all core requirements located at 304 Mississippi Street in accordance with survey by Roy C. Edwards Jr., dated revised 2/10/1984, Z-2017 06 00038, recommended approval by zoning commission with the following conditions. One, the manufactured home must meet all requirements of placement and must be constructed to meet the latest hood standards. And two, the approval shall be with the understanding that such use is a personal right that expires upon a change in occupancy of ownership by Johnny Jackson. Tracy Shalacy.
This is Mr. Johnny asking for placement of a manufactured home on his property on Mississippi Street. It is in a proposed mobile home area, so our board recommended approval with the standard conditions.
Okay.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for August 8, 2017. Introduction, number four, introduction of an ordinance of rezoning request by Lawanda Smith to rezone from RS3 to MXN located on Lot 2, Block 1, Lincoln Park subdivision, located at 2701 Anderson Street, Z-2017-0500036, recommended approval by zoning commission Tracy Shalacy.
This is a piece of property at the corner of Anderson and Harden, as you enter Lincoln Park subdivision. Ms. Lawanda is here, and she's asking for the property rezoned from residential 3 to mixed-use neighborhood to allow several different uses for this property.
Any questions? Pleasure to counsel.
So moved.
Introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for August 8, 2017.
I tell you, before you go to the last one, I think that this introduction of this motion, we might, we had a conversation about that, and I think that they're, that the request of, of Mrs. Smith, that we delete that from the.
Yeah, she asked to remove this request.
Remove it from the. Remove it from the, she's requesting.
Motion.
Entertained a motion to remove introduction five from the agenda.
So.
So moved to introduce.
To remove.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved to remove.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, motion to adjourn, thank you.